Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll get it started on Sound City Council. Today is May 30th, 2016. It's now a couple of minutes after seven. We did not have a closed session tonight, so we are beginning tonight. I guess number two in our agenda. Moving right into the regular meeting. Additional items, councilors? Counselor Lemon?
Yes, your worship. I have two items to bring up of meetings or events that I attended on behalf of the city.
Good, thank you. Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, worship. I have notice of one event that I attended on behalf of yourself.
I've had a busy month. Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, worship. I have a couple announcements on Police Week.
In that way, Counselor Gregg?
Thank you, Mayor Boy. I've got one on ATVs on the County Rail Corridor.
Staff, anything? I'll have a couple of comments and things that I've been doing. And Counselor Thomas isn't here with us yet. I assume he's coming, so we'll maybe leave a place setting for him there that if he has anything that he wishes to comment on as well. I note that Counselor Dodd is away tonight. I think he's in a training session. And Deputy Mayor Wright has had a knee repair, so she's not able to attend tonight. Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof, anyone? Seeing none. Confirmation of minutes from May 16th, 2016? Someone have the list? Oh.
I wonder.
Yeah, I don't know what you're reading.
I don't know. I just do what I know.
Jim read last. It's not.
I read that.
It's got to be Jim.
You know what, I think? Just getting the paperwork to be perfected. Probably what I'll do is I'll just give it to you two since you closed this and... Oh, unless he's got names on it already. Now Jeff, you don't have to give me all those things to sign after if you don't want to.
We're on the minutes, your worship. Is that right?
Yes, at 5:00 A.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor O'Leary, that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 16th, 2016, as printed, be adopted.
And on favor. That is carried. So I'll move slowly to number six.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor O'Leary, that City Council now go into Committee of the Whole to consider public meetings, deputations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports, matters tabled, motions for which notice was previously given, and other business.
And on favor. And that is carried, so we are now in Committee of the Whole. Starting with seven, public meeting, 7:00 A. With regard to intention to declare surplus and dispose of land ministerly known as 612 Fourth Avenue East. I believe first we need a motion to adjourn the council meeting, to go to the special meeting. Counselor Lemon has moved on favor. That is carried. Thank you. Number two. I hereby declare the public meeting open. This is a public information meeting being held to inform residents of the intention to dispose of municipal property, which is a vacant lot located at 612 Fourth Avenue East. Residents will recall that the city previously adopted a recommendation to pass a bylaw to declare the land surplus to the city's needs and to schedule a public meeting, sorry, a public information session on the proposal to dispose of the vacant property. A brief presentation will be given by city staff. Following, there will be an opportunity for residents to comment or ask questions. So I'll go to number three or sub-three comments from Deputy Clerk.
Your worship, this is a public meeting to receive public comment. Notice of the meeting has been provided in accordance with the city's disposition of land bylaw number 20, 2012, 195, Section 7 and 8B and D. Notice regarding the notice of intention to dispose of the vacant lot was provided by publishing notice on the city's website on May 5th, 2016, and by forwarding notice by mail on May 9th, 2016, to the three abutting property owners at 606 Fourth Avenue East, 386 Fourth Avenue East, and 170 12th Street East. The disposition of land bylaw requires that notice of the public meeting be provided at least 10 days in advance of council making a decision. The Director of Community Services will confirm that council is not being requested to make a decision at this meeting, but merely to receive any additional comments from the public, both in writing or orally. I would ask those in attendance to sign the sign-in sheet for communication purposes. Personal information collected at this public meeting is collected under the authority of the Municipal Act 2001. The information collected will be used for purposes related to the proposed sale or disposition of the property and will form part of the public record. Questions about this collection should be addressed to the Deputy Clerk, myself.
Thank you. Ms. Coulter, Director of Community Services, going to present the information?
Thank you, worship. As noted, this is a meeting in accordance with our land sale bylaw to receive public input on a proposal to sell and declare surplus some vacant lands. So the subject property is 612 Fourth Avenue East. It's located on the west side of Fourth Avenue East, just north of the intersection with Sixth Street. The city acquired or vested the property. The small home on the property was demolished, and a tax sale produced no valid tenders. The property is designated residential and zoned R4, subject to a special provision. Just an air photo of the area of the subject property outlined in red. So council on April 18th considered a report and gave the following direction, one that we declare the land surplus to the needs in accordance with the city's disposition of land bylaw, we would provide public notice, and the clerk has reported on that. Notice was posted on our website, and we did mail the abutting property owners. In addition, I sent them a letter with the staff report and set a meeting date. Council also had noted that the requirement for evaluation be waived and that the method of sale was to be direct negotiation. Two of the abutting property owners have shown an interest in the lands, and I have met with both of them on May 19th. In terms of next steps, we will be getting estimates for the survey and legal costs and sharing those with the residents. And then, based on the input received tonight, your worship, we'll be bringing forward a bylaw to declare the land surplus. So again, the focus of tonight's meeting is really to hear any public input on the proposed disposition.
Good, thank you. So now it's an opportunity to hear comments from the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on this matter? Seeing no one going to the microphone. Second time anyone interested in commenting on the disposal of this land. Seeing none. Doesn't look like anyone's going to change their mind. So I believe we're, we've heard from everyone that we're going to hear from. So if I can declare this public meeting closed. And I believe we need a motion to reconvene the council meeting. Counselor, I'm going to go back to Counselor Lemon again. That was so moved. And all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. So that takes us down to number eight, which is deputations. First, we're hearing from Jan Chamberlain and David Bradley, I believe, from Council of Aging Gray Bruce on Sound. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship, and councilors, staff, other guests. Just wait till this fires up. I'm not David Bradley. Unfortunately, David couldn't make it today. I'm Wally Halliday, Council of Aging Gray Bruce on Sound. Jan Chamberlain's here, Mary Diane Carroll, both of them are board members.
Welcome.
I thank you for the opportunity to present. If I can work this thing. Ah, look at that, works. So anyway, the senior summit was planned and organized, sponsored by the Active Lifestyle Centre Gray Bruce, which was the original On Sound Senior Centre, which, that was done in March of 2014. The purpose of the summit was to gauge the interest of older adults in Gray and Bruce Counties in forming their own council on aging. And at that time, as you can see there, all we kept hearing was it's about time somebody did something for the seniors, so. The funding, to fund the Council on Aging Gray Bruce startup, the Active Lifestyle Centre Gray Bruce supplied for a grant from the Ontario Senior Secretariat. Funding was received in November of 2014, and of course, as with anything, there was a condition. We had to have it formed and in place by the end of March 2015. So the steering committee was formed, and for the next three months, January to March, they were busy getting things organized, so. To start off with, we broke the Gray Bruce into five distinct areas, North Bruce, South Bruce, East Gray, West Gray, and of course, On Sound on its own because of the size and the population. From there, we did, the steering committee held information sessions in each of these areas, took applications from interested people that showed up that wanted to sit on the Council of Aging Board of Directors, as well as any that wanted to sit on community advisory committees, which is our, excuse me, which is our plan down the road, so. There was three members from each of those areas selected to sit on the Council on Aging, plus one representative from USCO, which is the United Senior Citizens of Ontario, one representative from Zone 9, and one representative from Zone 32. Zone 9 covers down to the lake and down south, and Zone 32 carries on up to Tovemore and across, so. Those, for a total of 17 members on there. The, the whole idea of that was to provide the, doing gap analysis, provide a goal to the setup and network of advisory committees in each corner of Gray and Bruce. And the abundant educations, there's a number of educational programs out there, four. And one thing to remember, age-friendly communities, not just about seniors. It's basically, for the lack of better termination, cradle to grave, because age-friendly communities take in everybody. And so, it's the abundant organizations and programs out there. They're not always accessible to a lot of people, or a lot of people don't know about them. And we've set up partnerships with the Royal Canadian Legion, so we can help run information sessions. Excuse me. The presentations, we did, we've done both Gray County and Bruce County council presentations. We've done a couple other municipalities as well. Again, you can see there, we've got a partnership with Royal Canadian Legions, so that we can help support municipalities in formation of information sessions. The community advisory committees basically are going to be the eyes and ears of the people out in the Gray Bruce on Sound. They're directly, the community advisory committees directly interface with the residents, and this is where the master aging plan, they'll solicit information that can go towards a master aging plan. And that, we hope, will then come down through. One of the things of age-friendly communities, and if you ever go into or look at any place that is age-friendly designated, and there are towns and cities out there that are, those are the eight items that they have to cross off and meet in order to qualify for the age-friendly community's designation. The outdoor spaces, that's major impact on mobility, independence, quality of life, just plain accessibility for everyday living. Transportation, to make it accessible and affordable. And fortunately, in Gray and Bruce Counties, they have got Moving GB, which basically is a program right now that is working on that initiative. And one thing that we believe in at the Council of Aging is there's no need for duplication. If it's already there, all we do, need to do is communicate back and forth so that everybody knows what everybody's doing. So that's working quite well for them. Housing, that, the biggest problem, biggest thing with that is proximity to services, as you're well aware, On Sound and then the rest of Gray Bruce is spread out in pretty rural. So it's always an issue of some seniors that want to maybe stay at home of getting to those services. Social participation, participation, interaction with other members of their community, respect and social inclusion. Civic participation and employment. One of the things is civic engagement, volunteer opportunities, and letting these people know. One of the things that we're very fortunate in Gray and Bruce and On Sound is that we have a pile of volunteers. And lots of times, if it wasn't for the volunteers, it wouldn't keep a lot of these other little rural municipalities still running, as well as hospitals and whatever, and all the other organizations, so. Communication and information, ability to stay connected, and the biggest issue there, of course, is getting into a format where everybody can get access to it and understand it and work with it. Community support and health services, and that's to, you want to look at getting good quality and appropriate and accessible care. The proposals to councils and municipalities, this is where the Council of Aging, we're volunteer organization, and as most volunteer organizations, there's no money. So what we try to do is support municipalities, facilitate the setup of community advisory committees. We want to do that in all 17 municipalities within Gray Bruce on Sound. We also will support the other municipalities, we've worked with a couple already, to look for, look at applications to the Ontario Senior Secretariat and other funds to implementation of the community advisory committees and their work on the master aging plans. These municipal plans will then roll up into the county plans, we're hoping, that's the idea, that's the aim. And any recommendations proposed by the municipal action aging plans would be reviewed and, of course, reviewed and approved by the council and municipal councils, county council and municipal councils, and then credited to their age-friendly community development strategy. One of the things that we've really tried to stress on lately, because we've found out through different conversations with the Ontario Senior Secretariat and other funds, we don't stand in very good stead to get grants because we're not a corporation. And the whole idea of, and they want to be, they want us to be associated with municipalities so that there's a sustainability there of the age-friendly initiative going forward. We've been, I've been in conversations with Hanover, I've been to some of the meetings. They have that, the council down there put it into the plans. They are working on an age-friendly designation, and they're moving along, as with anything and everything's slow. You wonder when it's going to take hold, but it is coming. So our whole, we're hoping that the municipalities will embed the age-friendly community's vision into their strategic plans and then be able to carry that on forward and through that. One of the things that we're finding is that, you know, every place I go, they're always saying, well, we're trying to keep the young people, you know, we're trying to not have them go to the city. Well, a lot of them are coming to On Sound because it's a city, and you've got a lot of manufacturing. You get out in the rural areas, there's not an awful lot for them. So the whole idea is to try and keep everybody, keep everybody interested in the area, so. Anyway, other than that, thank you kindly for your time. If there's any questions, I'll try and answer them. If I don't have the answers, I'll get them for you.
Questions, Counselor Lemon?
Yeah, I was just looking at the list you had of age-friendly communities, and I think On Sound is well on the way in terms of outdoor spaces, transportation, housing, social participation, inclusion, communication, information, community support, and health services. And in the later slide, you asked for someone to be appointed by the city as a liaison between the Council on Aging and the city?
Yes. What, the idea is if we get the community advisory committees, if you set up a community advisory committee here, it would be, the most appropriate way to do it would be have somebody designated from city staff that kind of sits on that committee as well, as well as other members from the community that can bring items forward. Then the Council on Aging, which, again, is a volunteer organization, we would then have a board of seven, if all municipalities, including On Sound, the city of On Sound got on board, we would have 17 people sitting at the Council of Aging Board. And that, those people from the city then, if they could liaison back to the Council on Aging, because our whole premise is to promote the age-friendly communities to municipalities.
And that part I get and fully understand, and certainly support. But from, going forward from this point, are you looking to us to set up a council on aging, or are you looking to set up a council on aging and we work with it?
Municipalities to set it up, because that, they're the ones that have to embed it into their, into their plans. They're the ones that have to maintain the sustainability. I ran into this Ontario Senior Secretariat, and we had a good, long conversation on it, but they are looking, if they're going to do grants, and most government bodies, if the Ontario Government or federal, if they're going to do grants, they look at what's behind it. It's fine and dandy to throw $25,000 out there and get something set up, but if there's nothing behind it to maintain it, then they don't want to be on board. And so what they look at is they would like to see the municipalities be part of that, and they initiate the community advisory committees, and we'll certainly go out and we can do similar presentations to this, as well as we have other information for the participants that want to get involved in those meetings, to advise them on where it's going and what it is.
Well, I would very much like to see the city move ahead on this. I think it's an important initiative, because one of the things that the age-friendly communities, it's not just seniors, it's age-friendly for everyone. And I'm looking at the issues there. Those affect a lot of people in the community, not just seniors. It affects the whole community.
Exactly, and this is why I said age-friendly communities are cradle to grave. They're not just seniors.
I'm going to keep moving here. Counselor Kepke had a question, I believe.
Thank you, worship. Thank you for your presentation. I know it's been a long time that you've been working on this, and I'm glad to see it finally at this stage. I wanted to ask staff, I know that there has been some work with staff in the Council on Aging, or they've received presentations, I don't know if it's city manager, Director of Community Services or not, if there has been this approach already as a Council on Aging community or corporate group with all the municipalities, I didn't, this is the first I'm hearing of this particular group.
Through you, worship. It's the first I've actually heard of this as well. I would certainly, as council knows, we realigned our committee structure in 2016, quite frankly, to reduce some of our committees, have them report through three main committees. I would suggest perhaps if council wishes us to look at where this group may fit in our committee structure, I would be pleased to do that. But as far as starting again before the year's even complete, as council knows, we're going to see how this went, I would be somewhat reluctant to recommend council consider adding another committee when we're just not even five months into this new committee structure. But this is the first I've heard of this particular wanting a council committee.
I'd also like to be interested, or be interested in hearing what other municipalities have already agreed to form a committee? Have there been?
We're still in the building stage of those, so I can't tell you that there's anything up and running, other than I do know that I do work with the Town of Hanover. I've been to some of those meetings, and I am participating in some of those meetings so that we, because their whole, their whole item, their whole idea is, they've already built it, the council is fully supportive of it, and they are looking to be what I call WHO, W H O, the World Health Organization-approved age-friendly community designation. So then that puts the municipality out there as one that has met all those areas, or certainly they, they've got the biggest majority of them met, that they then are open to business for, like I said, cradle to grave.
I know there is a portion of our strategic plan that we did discuss seniors and age-friendly issues, and that certainly is in the forefront in our strategic plan that we've just done not that long ago. But I don't know that we're ready, of course, to jump into anything until we hear more from staff or on this.
And that's fully understand, and I understand where the city manager's coming from as well. You don't want to, you don't want to go jumping in the middle of somewhere and screwing everything up on something that you're trying to figure out. So we're not looking at a separate committee, we're not looking at a separate entity within the city. We're just looking for somebody that maybe can work with us, and we're certainly, and I'll put the pressure on Jan, because she's right here in On Sound, and I'm actually from Brockton, Brockton, Illinois, but we're more than happy to meet with city staff at any time to see if there's anything we can do to help.
So just to give you a bit of background, if you want, you've still got another question?
Yeah, the county's role in all of this as well, that was another query I had as well, if there are, if there's a group in On Sound that is looking to apply for a grant, the city, I'm sure, would be happy to be an agent for a flow-through of those funds, because they've done that before.
Yes, and that's, and that's actually, Bruce County and Gray County and On Sound were on board with the initial grant that we got, and it was backed by support from those councils. And we got that grant, and when we talked to them, they said, they more or less told us that's a one-shot deal. Anybody can say, hey, I support you, but nothing behind you to back you up. And so what they're looking for is sustainability. It's fine to get all of these things and have the committee in place, but if there's no sustainability to drive those eight items to make the municipality age-friendly designated, then they don't look at it as being a favorable place to place money. then they don't look at it as being a favorable place to, to place money, place an investment.
So I think this, some of this discussion started in the election of 2010 where I was looking at the World Health Organization, Jan was looking at it, and Jerry and Mike Trainor certainly were looking at something similar to put this together in our community, and then they kept looking bigger. So they're looking at Gray and Bruce, right across Gray and Bruce, because as you've said, a big part of it is transportation where a lot of people are living rurally and need transportation, need some social participation, so it can't all just be in On Sound. So I think the idea is, it came to county council two to three weeks ago, to Bruce County, then getting to all the municipalities and trying to stoke the fire at this point to, and I assume you're going to come back at some point when we know what the other municipalities are on board and where we're going from there.
We can certainly, we can certainly stay in touch as far as, you know, continue the liaison back and forth, we can.
That, that was, that was kind of my understanding from the county presentation, that that was the idea, that it was just in the starting phase and then...
We are doing Bruce Peninsula and West Gray in the next, I think it's in June, and then there's a couple more in there that I have to get set up yet.
Because of social services being at the county, in my mind, and maybe speaking out of turn, that probably is the, the centerpiece to pulling it all together for the, for the both counties, so.
It's, a lot of it is based around the accessibility, and that's why social services was the perfect fit as far as making the presentation up there.
That's great, thank you very much. Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Gregg.
Thank you, I just, inquiries to, would it be beneficial to your group perhaps then to approach, you know, our community services committee quarterly or, or twice a year just to update us on, on your initiatives? And that, there might be the, the perfect liaison between your group and four members of council and the mayor.
And that would, that to me would make, make sense, the social services committee, that's, that would be a good liaison back and forth from there because then we can, we can see what you've already done and what's already in place and, and what we don't even have to try and promote and what we can help you with promote.
Good. So it's, at some point when you're ready to come back to the community services committee, I think that would be appropriate and we'll, we'll be ready.
We're taking baby steps.
Perfect.
We're learning as we go as well.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much for everybody's time. Thank you.
Now, the next deputation somehow involves Jan Chamberlain again, I see, but it's starting off with Kim Westbriggs, Chair of the Community Foundation Gray Bruce, with the introduction of a new executive director. Welcome. Just before you get going, Kim, congratulations on your great event at noon hour last Friday, I think it maybe it was the Friday before, your lunch presentation with the Governor General, it was an amazing lunch and amazingly informal, so congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor. It is, it was a pleasure to have him here and it was very exciting and we look forward to many more raising of the profile of Community Foundation Gray Bruce. It is my pleasure tonight to introduce to you someone who is not a stranger to the city of On Sound, but who has become our new executive director. And we are very, very happy and excited to have had Stuart Reed join us officially on Friday, May the twentieth, and Stuart's here to do some official handing out tonight. Thank you very much.
Welcome home, Stuart.
Thank you, Your Worship. Very pleased to be here and very pleased to be representing the Community Foundation Gray Bruce. I, I've been in these chambers many, many, many times, often representing another wonderful institution, a cornerstone in our cultural community, and it's, it's great to be back. Thank you. Tonight, we are going to be talking to you a little bit about the On Sound Community Fund and formerly called the On Sound Hundred-and-Fiftieth Anniversary Legacy Fund, it was established back in 2007, as an avenue to support community needs specifically within the city of On Sound. Of course, the Community Foundation Gray Bruce serves both counties. The On Sound Community Fund doesn't compete with local organization in the fundraising arena, but relies on the generosity of individuals and groups to build ongoing sustainable support for local initiatives here in On Sound. And tonight, we're going to recognize three groups who will be receiving grants from the On Sound Community Fund. Tomorrow night, at the 2016 Community Foundation Gray Bruce Spring Granting Evening, which is being held at the Jubilee Hall in Walkerton at seven o'clock, and I invite you all to attend. It'll be a wonderful festive celebration of sharing. Tonight, we're going to, with Jan assisting, we're going to introduce three of the recipient organizations and invite a representative to come forward to tell you a little bit about their project. First up, we have the On Sound Fast Pitch Association. They're going to be receiving a grant supporting a five-day tournament for the Banton Boys Canadian Championship Tournament and a two-day tournament for Banton Boys Provincial Championship. So I'd like to welcome forward Bill Simpson to receive a formal certificate and to say a few words, or Sandy Simpson?
Sandy.
Sorry about that. Here you are.
Thank you.
Your pleasure.
Thank you.
We have been, the On Sound Fast Pitch has actually been hosting Canadian provincial tournaments since 1980. It's a phenomenal undertaking every year. We do it pretty well every year. The expense is, as I say, from fundraising mostly on our part. We are a small organization, but we work very hard twelve months of the year to make sure this happens. We do it only because, first of all, we love it, but our commitment is mostly to the minor ball system, to make sure that they, it gives an opportunity for both boys and girls to keep playing fastball, develop their skills so someday they can play in a provincial Canadian tournament. We have actually put On Sound on the map in Ontario and in Canada as this, not only as the fastball center, but On Sound itself. Anybody that comes here just loves the area, the businesses benefit, everything, the whole area benefits. And there's nothing about, but good comments about On Sound, people that have been here. We've got, the Canadian tournament is in August for five days, and we've got teams as some east and west, we've got ten teams all over Canada participating. So this grant, we appreciate very much because it certainly will go to help us to fund these tournaments and for the minor ball, and thank you very much.
Our second group tonight is the Orchestra North On Sound. Orchestra North On Sound has grown to five exciting days of music programs for local players of all ages and abilities to learn from professional music teachers while enriching lives and communities through music and the arts. And I'd like to welcome forward Sebastian Ostertag to say a few words about the orchestra.
Thanks. Congratulations. Thanks a lot.
You're very welcome.
Good evening, council, worship, public. This summer will be the second year of Orchestra North. I'm one of the founding directors of the, of the group, and we're really thrilled to be here in downtown On Sound. We're gonna be, it's five days, it's instructions. What we're hoping to do is basically help support the organizations that are already in town that are making music. So specifically like the Georgian Bay Symphony and our other community partner, which is Sweetwater Music Festival. And so what we're hoping to do is a few things, get some younger people interested in playing music, developing the skills of our amateur players already in town, so a little bit more focused attention on, on playing music, and also bringing in new audience members to the Harmony Center, which is our home, and we're really thrilled to be there. We have a, a great faculty. It kind of splits between local and nationally recognized faculty. I grew up in On Sound, I play the cello, I just finished my master's degree. We have Kira MacArthur, local artist and cellist, she'll be teaching cello as well as giving art instructions. My co-director, Roxy Dykstra, plays regularly with the Toronto Symphony, Vancouver Symphony, and is currently playing in Portugal in their national symphony there. As well as we have a guitar player who does, who's studied in Ghana, and a musicologist who's doing her doctorate degree. So we're bringing very high-level players, but we're also working with the, the great talent that we have here in On Sound. One of the great things about the festival too is the way that it supports the other organizations. So youth participants at Orchestra North, when they come, they will also receive two vouchers so that they can attend the Sweetwater Music Festival in September. So we really push the collaboration part as well. The Georgian Bay Symphony has been really good with helping us with administrative and, and promotional work so that we can have people send their registrations to the symphony office, and it helps them because we're hoping that as we, we grow, we'll be able to send more players up to join the symphony. We also have a series of local donors, private donors and local businesses, and one of the great things about it is on the Friday afternoon, we're gonna do a Classics on Main, where we're gonna see all of our participants, they're gonna be in small groups, they're gonna be rotating through businesses downtown. So if you hang out somewhere at one of the cafes, you might see three, four, or five different groups go by, you just hang out, drink a coffee, enjoy some music. We're also very dedicated to making this program affordable for, for all participants. We have family rates, we give bursaries and scholarships, and basically when people come to us and say, "Hey, I, I need some help to come to Orchestra North," we basically ask them, "Well, what number works well for you?" And we do our best to get to that place. We have a few other events as well. On Wednesday, July twentieth, we're gonna be collaborating with the Noon Hour Series, which has actually been going on for twenty-three years now, with a faculty concert. And on Saturday, July twenty-third, there'll be a final orchestra concert at the Harmony Center, and the public is welcome. So we have a great mix of private instruction as well as public events, and you're all welcome to attend. If you want more information, you can find it at orchestranorth.com/owensound, or just go to Orchestra North. We're also on Facebook. We'll have a lot of concerts, but also workshops that you can come by and kind of see what we're doing. I wanna thank the On Sound Community Fund for their generous support. It's, it really helps make this thing happen, and we're really, really excited to bring musicians of all ages to downtown On Sound this summer.
Sebastian, did you say when? Did you give us the dates?
Oh, sorry, July nineteenth to twenty-third.
Nineteenth to twenty-third, good, thank you.
That's important.
Okay. Thank you. Finally, the Women's Centre Gray and Bruce is initiating a program called Food For You. They're receiving a grant to use, to buy special food items that address today's special delivery requirements and the need for healthy options for women and children at the centre. And it's my pleasure to welcome forward Teresa Timmerman to talk, talk a little bit about it.
Thank you, everyone, worship, councillors, public. My role is the manager of community development for the Women's Centre, and some people don't know what the Women's Centre is. The Women's Centre is a shelter for domestic violence, women and their children. Last year, we had within the shelter around three hundred, sixty-five of those were children. We actually have two sections in On Sound, there's actually the shelter itself and then there was what we call second stage. Second stage is on the east side of town, and it is where women traditionally go who have children, after they've been in the shelter, they can stay there for up to a year. The second stage portion though is funded totally different. So we are actually, throughout the year, we actually do fundraising for at least one-third of the beds. And with second stage, again, it's totally different. And what we ran into this last year is a lot of issues food-wise, in the sense of we do our typical fundraising, et cetera, but now we're getting into a lot of special diets. We're getting into a lot of allergies, we're getting into a lot of those issues, and that's very difficult when we're working on such a tight budget, but obviously when someone comes through that door and they're not allowed to have peanuts, or they're not allowed to have this or that, we have to go out and figure out how we're gonna buy these items. So obviously, we wrote a grant that was called Just For You or Food For You, and it was twofold. It was to deal with some of those special items. We had, last year, we had a woman who couldn't have any fish products, but what that did is it allowed us, in a way, we had to say, "Okay, we can't do any of these items, we can do this." So it had to change the entire house structure. We have a lot of group counseling on the other side of town at the second stage. What we have found is a lot of the women will come in, and these women are what are going through transition in a, totally. They might have already been at the shelter and they've left, or they're still in a counseling and they're not sure how things are going to work. Being a mother, and obviously, many of these women are making the decision they're going to be homeless. So what they're ending up doing is having to say, "Okay, how am I gonna do these things? How am I gonna feed my family?" A lot of them will come in for group counseling, and what we found is they've taken the little money they have to feed their children, and so nutritionally, they're really suffering. So obviously, we all know you've got to heal from the inside out. So we thought if we had a program where we could actually bring in the good food box, have women come in and choose items out, you know, they could take it into their residence, they could do whatever with it, gave them, them a little bit of security of, "This is something I have again, that I can divvy up." So it gave us some different options, and that's why we were writing this specific grant, to be able to say, "Okay, we can have the good food box, we can have some of these specialty items." When we have the counseling, to have the nutrition items there, that if someone needs apples and oranges and things, that they're there. So that was something we were really striving for, and we're really thankful that we were able to secure this grant because we're hoping that it'll be able to obviously give the women a sense of, that people know that they're there, people know that they're caring for what goes into their bodies too. And what we really need to do is bring it back to the point of view of saying, as women, mothers, their children, that they are very important to everyone in On Sound, and that was the reason. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could just for a minute, I'd like to congratulate the Community Foundation on getting Stuart, yes, Stuart. Isn't that wonderful that we have a new executive director to follow, Ally Boltman? And the other thing I'd like to say, how nice it is that now the Community Foundation is over twenty-two years old, but it did start right in this room. I think all of you know the history with Over Jackson going to Ottawa and seeing this happen and realizing they still, the council still need to give out money, but it wasn't taxpayers' money. This is money that's all been donated and saved, and it's only the interest that is given out. So we have a really lovely bank account in On Sound of over, Kim, is it's?
Thirteen million.
Thirteen million dollars now in twenty-two years, and this community is to be congratulated on believing in this, this way, and it's wonderful we can give these grants out here because we want you to know we're partners with the city on doing this, and it was from homecoming 2007 that we started this fund. So thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you. So we want to congratulate and thank Teresa, Sandy and Sebastian for the things that you do in the community and, and obviously got rewarded for it from a good organization. Stuart, welcome back and look forward to working with you over the next several years. And Kim and Jan and everyone at Community Foundation, thanks for the things that you do in making our community better with, with your efforts and with all the money that's collected. So congratulations and thanks to all of you. So I think next on the agenda is number nine, public question period. Seen people moving, but they're not coming to the microphone, I don't think, oh, good. Number ten, correspondence. We don't have any correspondence for which direction a council has received, we're down to eleven A. First is report from the purchasing agent with regard to Twelfth Street East reconstruction from Third to Fourth Avenue East. Ms. Allen, you presenting that?
Thank you, Your Worship. This is a road reconstruction project addressing a stretch of road where all the linear infrastructure has reached the end of its useful life. It's the Twelfth Street East segment that runs from Third Avenue East to Fourth Avenue East. Engineering for this project was completed a few years ago, however, construction was deferred in order to prioritize Third Avenue East and Eighth Street East. So now that we're ready to undergo the project, the recommendation awards, recommendation, recommends awarding the tender to McDoanal Excavating, who had the lowest compliant bid for the project. The total bid of four hundred and thirty-four thousand nine sixty-three is within the approved budget. The total bid of $434,963 is within the approved budget for this project, and the project will be funded from our formula-based OCIF funding, and the remainder will come from water and wastewater rates.
Thank you. Questions? Council McMahon, I mean.
Move to approve the recommendation, your worship.
Okay, any questions? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Number two, again, report from the purchasing agent with regard to sanitary truck, no, truck sanitary sewer.
Thank you again. This is a forward step towards new development and growth. Awards the environmental assessment for construction of a trunk sanitary sewer for the Sidnum Heights Secondary Planning Area. This opens up development potential of the land south of 16th Street East and east of 18th Avenue East. The recommendation awards the RFP to GM Blue Plan, who had the highest score with a total cost of $124,448. The budget for this project was $150,000, and it's funded through development charges. So any surplus that remains at the end of the year will remain in the development charges reserved to be used for future growth-related projects.
So that was trunk, not truck?
The trunk, yes.
My mistake. Comments? Counselor O'Leary?
Thank you, your worship. Motion to move the recommendation.
Any questions? Counselor Lemon?
Yeah, I noticed we had the point rating, but we didn't have the actual dollar value of the various bids.
Through you, your worship, our purchasing bylaw notes that when we report the awards, we provide the total scores for each of the proponents, but only the dollar amount for the awarded proponent.
So that's consistent with every other report? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, in the last one, for instance, we saw exactly where they stood financially.
That, the difference there would be that was a tender, whereas this is an RFP. And in the tender scenario, we award based on the lowest price only.
I'm going to call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thanks. Number three, manager of property owns some police station roof replacement.
Thank you, your worship. The police station was built in 1970 and had a significant upgrade in 2005, 2006. The roof, as you can see on the schematic in front of you, was, is sort of in three parts. In 2015, Garland, Canada, had performed a roof inspection, and it was noted that Section 1 would need to be replaced as part of the 2017 budget. Unfortunately, late winter, early spring, we saw some leaks at the station, and there was a re-inspection done at that time, and some temporary work done to just stop the leaking. But unfortunately, that roof has failed and needs to be replaced immediately. Section 2 of the roof also has some punctures, and it's recommended that we also replace that in conjunction with Section 1. This project was not budgeted in 2016, but rather planned for 2017. The total cost is $226,500. The senior management team sat down together with the city manager and the capital budget, and in the financial section, you'll see the other projects that are recommended to be deferred in order to fund this project. So the recommendation is that, in consideration of the report, council approved the request to replace Section 1 and 2 in the fall of 2016. I would note that this would be, that the actual work would be tendered in accordance with our purchasing bylaw.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Counselor Kepke?
Just a question on the projects being deferred. Those are projects of the city, is that correct? Not police projects? Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Anyone want to move it? Seems to be reluctance. Counselor Gregg?
Well, after seeing the photos taken from within the building, I'm glad to move the recommendation. That's just unacceptable. You can't have a building like that, so.
Okay, other comments? Call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Number five, report from manager of contract services with regard to source protection funding agreement. Did I miss one? Skip number four, yes, I did. Sorry, community planner with regard to condo exemption for Victoria Towers.
Thank you, your worship. This is a request from Mackenzie Lake Lawyers on behalf of Critch Holdings, and it does deal with Gray Standard Condo 97, which is commonly known as Victoria Towers. The purpose of this request is to correct an error in the condo plan and the declaration that was registered in 2012, which referenced 87 units in the building actually contains only 82. So there is a process under the condominium act for council to grant this exemption. It was subject to a full plan of condominium and site plan approval. All the conditions of the condominium have been met, and a certificate of compliance has been issued with respect to the site plan. So the applicant requires approval from the city in order to modify the description of the condo in the documents registered on title. In this case, it will accurately reflect the number of units existing in the building and reflect the number of units previously approved by the city, which was 82. So in consideration of the report, the recommendation is that council would approve the request for condo exemption under Section 9 of the condominium act, and direct the clerk to bring forward a bylaw authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign the exemption certificate, which is attached to the report.
Thank you. Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question. I'm not quite clear on the exemption. So it's being exempt because it was, it said 87, not 82, but it's still going to be a condo? Is that correct?
Through you, your worship, yes, it still will be a condo.
It's just to make the correction?
That's right.
More or less? Okay, then I'm happy to move the motion.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor? That is carried. Thanks. Double check, now we can go to number five, which is a report from the manager of contract services, source protection funding agreement.
I'm looking out for that one, your worship. Thank you, your worship, members of council. This is actually just a council's approval to enter into an agreement with the province, and specifically the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, for a grant fund of approximately $65,000, which will be eligible for the next period up until March of 2017 to assist the city in establishing a source protection plan based on events and identified risks in the city, and actually to the west of the city and the township of Georgian Bluffs. This grant will provide assistance to the city for such things as municipal employee salaries, retaining consultants if required to develop the plans, and expenses related to training. And what will be happening is the city will be appointing two city staff to act as the risk management officer and the risk management investigator. They'll have to receive training from the MOECC to do that. This funding provides assistance for the training and the costs associated with that.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Counselor Kepke?
Thank you. I know that the Source Protection Committee has been waiting on Owen Sound's part of the agreement to be signed as part of the Conservation Authority report, and so I'm happy to move that recommendation.
Okay, other questions? Counselor McMahon?
Your worship, we won't be joining the Conservation Authority, though, on their, with their source water protection. This is, we would be doing it ourselves, I believe.
Through you, your worship, that is correct. The city will be doing this independently of the Conservation Authority. We'll probably be working cooperatively with them, but it will be city staff that will be performing the functions.
Is that a cost saving? Is that a cost saving, then, by doing that?
Well, we won't be having to pay additional staff. Conservation Authority was looking for some funding to look after this on behalf of the city. It will be city staff, so we're absorbing the cost through city staff. So this funding will provide support to that.
But you're still working with that Source Protection Committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon?
I think the main difference between us and many of the other communities in the catchment area of the conservation, we had so few, and I can't remember the number, risks, but it just wasn't, it was, it wasn't financially feasible for us to pay them to do it when we could do it in-house with our own staff, especially if we have this grant.
Counselor Gregg?
Thank you, everybody. Just the mention of Georgian Bluffs, the way you worded that, are we working with Georgian Bluffs, or that's, are they paying us a little to use our RMO, or is that just language there?
What it does is the city will have to develop, there's an events-based area that identifies storage, fuel storage facilities. They're outside the city, but because they impact the source area, which is the city's water treatment plant, the city has to develop that plan and protect the interests of the city and its source water. So we would be working with those specific facility owners to come up with a risk management plan for their facility, even though they're outside the city, because there potentially is a threat to the city's water supply.
Okay, other questions? Counselor Lemon?
Well, what about Meaford? Meaford's got a fair amount of waterfront that goes into that area as well.
Through you, your worship, if you look at page three of the report, you'll see the areas and the zones. They're actually categorized based on the fuel storage size. There's a very, very small area in the municipality of Meaford, just on Gray Road 15, just in the north boundary of the city, just north of 36th Street East. We'll have to look at that area, but there aren't any, actually any fuel storage facilities in that zone. So the municipality of Meaford is not involved.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Kepke has moved this, I believe, yeah. So, any other comments? Call the question. All in favor? That is carried. Okay, we're down to 11B, which is consent agenda items. Carolyn, you going to give us the list?
Your worship, on the consent agenda this evening, there are planning notices from other municipalities where no report was triggered. There are minutes of boards and committees for receipt, the Tom Thompson Art Gallery Report of Management, April 12, Festival of Northern Lights Board, April 12, Owen Sound Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, April 19, Gray Solvo Conservation Authority, Full Authority Board of Directors, April 13, 2016. There's correspondence received, which is presented for the information of council, listing appears at item 11B6 in the agenda. There were four business licenses issued, and one Hawker and Pedler license, business licenses were issued to Hand-on Sport Therapy and Consulting Rockies Cafe Inc., Opportunity Bridle, a traveling bridal show at the Days Inn on May 29, the DIA Hottest Street Sale on July 2, 2016, and Fat Boy Fireworks, sale of fireworks at Heritage Place Shopping Centre.
Thank you. Going to get, I'm going to get reports in some of those committees in a minute, but any questions for Carolyn at this point? So if I could get a motion to receive items 11B1 to 11B6 on the consent agenda dated May 30, 2016. Counselor Thomas?
So moved.
All in favor? That is carried. Thanks. Counselor Dodd isn't here to give us a report on the art gallery. Go ahead.
I did have a question about that for Mr. Ritchie. In those art gallery minutes, it says that the art gallery is planning on taking possession of the Rice House on June 1st. And then in minutes we're going to discuss later, it talks about us keeping possession till the end of the year, the city. And so I'm just wondering if there seems to be some disconnect there, or perhaps a conversation with the art gallery.
Yes, I know the curator was planning on giving council a briefing on their use of the Rice House moving forward. I think that's at the next council meeting, actually. I can tell you, the plan is they will take over the one other apartment on the end of the 1st of July, I believe, and the entire building at the first of the year. And then again, the Great Bruce Regional Health Centre has agreed to this arrangement, so, but I know council had asked the curator to come and explain exactly what the use of that building would be. She has agreed to come, and I believe it's perhaps to the next council meeting or the next community service advisory meeting.
Okay, thank you. Festival of Northern Lights, Counselor Gregg, do you want to give us an update on that?
Thanks, everybody. I can do that. April 12, we had a meeting, and largely, at that time, still, there was consideration about where to perhaps replace some of the biggest needs the festival has. The, at the front of their mind are looking at replacing and making the festival better all the time without growing it, knowing that they can't adequately, you know, service it to a bigger area. So they know that they're contained to a specific area, they need to make it better within that area. What are their biggest needs? They're looking at a redesign of Blinky, the mascot. He is, he's getting kind of aged, and that's a preeminent need. They also had looked at the city float the festival uses, and Carney's Lane lights, along with some light, new lighting for Main Street alongside the DIA. And at this time, this was April 12, there was still the Trillium Grant request for capital improvements. Things have seemingly changed in that front, but the needs are still the same. Alongside those needs, they have a tremendous need for specifically set-up and tear-down volunteers. So if anyone is aware of anyone that would be able to contribute labor to that necessity, the festival has a dire need for individuals for those positions specifically. And there will be an annual general meeting coming up in June, where festival is inviting members of the public to come out, to come engage, the board members, hopefully the current volunteers are able to attend that night. And I'll have that date by the time of the next council meeting as well to put forth. And lastly, this Saturday night, June 4th, is the return of Festival of Northern Lights Trivia Night. It's at the Bay Shore Community Centre, and there's tables of 10 for purchase. So if you are part of a large group that is trivia buffs, or perhaps if you're not trivia buffs, like myself, well, I'm in the middle. We'll see how I do. But there's still rooms, there's still available seating for purchase, and for more details, go to festivallights.ca. There's also registration forms there. But I'd also like to make a point that if you don't have a table of 10, that's not a prerequisite. Contact Leah at the board office and let her know that you may have two, three, four that can take part. And the festival is more than willing to oblige all those requests, so.
So Trivia Night is this Saturday?
This Saturday night, June 4th.
What time? My next tough one is...
I don't want to be late. It's seven o'clock. I have in my calendar.
And where's that at?
At the Bay Shore Community Centre.
They still dress up and have fun and do crazy things?
I might have to borrow your bowtie, your worship. So, yes.
What do you mean?
There is some dress, dressing up.
Dress up and be crazy, and you want to borrow my bowtie? What do you mean?
What's your point? Good, thanks.
Owen Sound Municipal Nonprofit Housing Corporation, Counselor Lemon, do you want to give us a report on the April 19 meeting?
Yes, your worship. The April 19 meeting was a regular monthly meeting of both Owen Sound Housing Company and Owen Sound Municipal Nonprofit Housing Company. We had a report on employment and standards, and there was matters of solicitor-client privilege that went on as well. Basically, there is some repair work to be done, and they are working forward on that. The list for needed housing is getting longer and longer, and it's getting, the wait times, particularly on one- and two-bedroom units, has just gone through the roof, particularly accessible units, and that's being identified further in a report that will be coming up, I expect, in about a month. And that's the main things that were done.
Okay, thank you. Gray Solvo Conservation Authority, Counselor Kepke?
Thank you, your worship. April 13, 2016. Of particular note in these minutes for the city of Owen Sound, there's notation there on the Mill Dam. There were some spindles on the, in the area that needed to be replaced because of poor construction, and those have been replaced, so everything's working well there. The Harrison Park issue, I'll just read what it says in the minutes. The Harrison Park issue, I'll just read what it says in the minutes. "There is a silt issue at Harrison Park. Authority staff have contacted city of Owen Sound staff, but have no response with regard to putting a proposal together. The city needs to contact the Department of Fisheries and Oceans with a proposal. If fill is needed, a permit is required from Gray Solvo Conservation Authority." Now, this is April granted. Things have happened since then, and I constantly get comments from the public about the state of that area of Harrison Park and how it does not look very attractive. So I just wondered if staff could maybe just give us an update on what is taking place there now.
Go ahead.
Through you, your worship, this is an event that, or this is an issue that staff are keenly aware of. Together with Mr. Becking and our engineering staff, we are looking at developing an engineering solution. Together with Gray Solvo, we will need their approval, as it is a fill-regulated area. There is no money in the budget to undertake the remediation this year. So, once we have a plan and discussions with Gray Solvo, we will be bringing that forward to council.
That's it? Good, thank you. Anything else that anyone noticed in the consent agenda we need to talk about? Councilor McManaman?
Thank you, your worship. There's a request from the Coda International to sell, to raise funds during the 150th, 160th. And I don't know that we need to grant them permission to sell bows, as they're requesting.
So I'm gonna ask Councilor Kepke to respond.
That item's being referred to the Canada 150, Owen Sound 160 Committee for their consideration. Thanks.
Good, thanks. So 11C is minutes of boards and committees, starting with, aha, the Canada 150, Owen Sound 160 Celebration Ad Hoc. And I think there's actually two of them, one and two there from March 24th and May 11th, if you want to cover those off, and then I guess move them separately just to...
Thank you, your worship. On March 24, that particular meeting, things are starting to get really exciting with the committee, and the activities that are taking place have been somewhat nailed down. There is an Ontario 150 tour called Festival Canadianna, and that tour will be coming through Owen Sound, July 7 to 9. So all kinds of activities, which I will explain in the next set of minutes to you that are taking place there. The Canada 150 and Owen Sound 160 Celebration Ad Hoc Committee is making a recommendation to apply for the Canada 150 grant with a focus on a 10-day event from June 30 to July 9, tentatively called Festival Canadianna, Owen Sound. And there's a listing of various things taking place. On June 30, there will be music shows and family fun at Kelso Park. July 1 will be Canada Day, July 2, Owen Sound Day. July 3 to 6, evening shows with lectures at indoor venues with partners. And July 7 to 9 will be the Ontario 150 at the Inner Harbor. And also being recommended in that set of minutes is that council endorse a citywide cleanup day to be held on Earth Day in 2017, so that we can prepare for the festivities that will be taking place. Earth Day, of course, is April 22, and we're looking for lots of volunteers to help with that. On the set of minutes from May the 11, there was one issue called Reconciliation Gardens at Kelso Beach Park, and this is a circle of one-heart gardens that had been prepared, originally proposed in 2013, but is now going to take place and unveiled in 2017. As well with that, Michael Davy has made a donation of a large bronze sculpture, which is a recreation of Wilmer Nagywan, and they're asking if this would be an appropriate place to put this sculpture in with the Reconciliation Gardens. So the Tom is seeking that permission as well. And this will be recognized as a community partner project with the 2017 celebrations. Now, the other one I have, I hope I'm saying this right, Mo'wan Jading Festival Canadianna, Owen Sound, will take place June 30 to July 9, which is a 10-day celebration at Kelso Beach Park. And this is outlined in the committee report on the various things taking place. So the, there's a partnership with our native heritage on that, and you'll note the activities that are taking place there in the minutes. Grant application will focus on the 10-day event, as I mentioned, in the other set of minutes. And also, funding application requests for less than $15,000 for celebration events are being referred to the Community Foundation Gray Bruce for various groups, if they wish to apply for funds that the Community Foundation Gray Bruce, I believe, has, $150,000 are giving out for these celebrations. So various groups can make applications to them for their projects. And they will be included, of course, in the ribbon of events taking place in Owen Sound throughout the whole year. There's a public meeting set up for June 20, 5:30 in the council, sorry, June 22, 5:30 in the council chambers. And at that public meeting, we're going to try and pin down particular groups and organizations that have already worked on their projects, slot them into our calendar so that we can start promoting all of those events for the year 2017. So things are starting to happen.
Good, thank you. Can I ask you to move both of those minutes?
We'll move both those sets of minutes, your worship.
And just before we get to questions, unless your motion is going to change anything in those reports, is it? Go ahead, counselor.
Okay, the question I had was, there was some discussion about the ownership of the Noma lights. Because my understanding, it rested with the city, and there was a suggestion that possibly it was passed over to Festival of Northern Lights. Has that been clarified?
Through you, your worship, I'm just looking for the spot in the minutes. It is, I think it says that a report would come back. However, the results of my research to date would suggest that the lights are owned by the city. So that report, I think, is to come back through that committee, as well as to address leaving the Noma lights up over the summer months during 2017.
Yeah, the reason, the rationale for asking for that was that the original Noma lights were put up in, some of us remember, 1957, and they were again done for the city's 150th, and it's most appropriate that they be again done for the 160, 150. And that's why that is coming forward.
And are there any other questions for Councilor Kepke?
If I could just add, your worship, on June 22, we will be having a public meeting, but I presume we'll be having a bit of a committee meeting as well that night to deal with the issue from the Coda Club requesting the sale of ribbons for that year, as well as the report on the Noma lights.
We do have both those items.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna call the questions, all in favor of approval of those minutes. That is carried. Thank you. So that's one and two. Minutes of City Hall Accommodation Ad Hoc Committee Meeting Held on May 17, Councilor Larry?
Thank you, your worship. We've actually had two meetings now. Just getting caught up on all the options and receiving answers to all our questions. Some of the highlights, we've decided to go ahead with some digging and radar work to determine how deep the footings are in the basement under finance. When we confirm the depth, we hope to have the mechanical room there, as well as storage and some space for IT. There would be about 3,500 square feet in that space. The exterior washrooms will be removed to allow for more workspace. The existing washrooms would not meet the current accessibility requirements. The public will have access to the washrooms inside the building. Part of this proposal will include upgrading the washrooms at the market building. We discussed the importance of having the engineering staff working at City Hall and everyone together working under one roof. As it is now, developers meet at City Hall, but have to go up to the City Works Building to meet with engineering. Engineering also has all their storage at the Bay Shore Community Center, which is an inconvenience as well. Right now, we're waiting on results in the air quality testing, and they should be available for our next meeting, which is on June 10. We also discussed doing the construction in phases to allow some staff to be in the building. The architect explained that having everyone out of the building is by far the best approach. It will be less disruptive to staff and the public, and will also be more cost-effective. The architect also confirmed that the average lifespan for the mechanical slash electrical equipment is in the 20-year range. However, after construction, the renovated building structure and shell of our City Hall will be good for another 60-plus years. And just a reminder, I keep this list, it seems to be, it seems to keep growing, but just a reminder of why the renovations to City Hall are necessary. The electrical is failing. We have mold and asbestos issues. There's no temperature control. It's either too hot or too cold. In fact, some rooms don't have air conditioning at all. There is no insulation in any of the outside walls in City Hall. Windows are leaking beyond repair. The electrical room vault is so old and so bad, hydro won't even service it. Just today, we had to close off one set of stairs to the exterior washrooms because of a railing that's popped off. Our elevator is really not accessible. Our City Hall doesn't have fully accessible washrooms. Water is getting in behind the brick and not draining properly, so the water freezes in the winter and expands, causing deteriorations with our outside walls. And as mentioned before, our next meeting is June 10, and we hope to have enough information to bring council a recommendation.
And with that, I move that we approve those minutes. So just looking, no approval specifically. The only thing that was moved was to go ahead and get more information from the radar testing of the unexcavated area. That's really the only motion in the whole report. The rest is information.
Right.
Any other questions from anyone? So that has been moved by Councilor Larry. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Down to number four, Minutes of Community Services Committee Meeting Held on May 18, 2016. Counselor Greg's gonna present those tonight.
Thanks, Mayor Buddy. We had a fairly long community services meeting, and it started with deputation from Carlin Vell. This is a gentleman who first made a deputation in Gray Solvo Conservation Authority about rock climbing on the West Rocks, specifically to the Old Quarry, which would be located or accessed at the end of 8th Street West, so just west of Hillcrest Public School. There is a road allowance that does go up the trail, or quasi-trail, and leads into the Old Quarry. So committee listened to a description of the activities taking place. There's currently some rock climbing already taking place, which is unsupervised, and staff have spoken, consulted with our city solicitor and insurer, and the feedback was that the rock climbing didn't pose a significant risk, but it should be taken upon the city to immediately place some signage up prohibiting such activities at this time, unless or except where written approval was obtained from the city. What committee listened to and agreed with was the need for an NEC permit or NEC permission. They have the, they're the controlling authority on the property, and the staff felt it best to grant approval to the Gray Solvo Conservation Authority and the city, rather than a specific individual, because in the future, what that would do is perhaps limit it to one specific individual, and you'd have to go through the same task a number of times. So this was felt to be the best approach at this time, and committee approved a request in principle for a one-year trial period to Carlin Vell and At Last, I think, At Last Adventures to take advantage of the rock climbing that's available in the Old Quarry. It was mentioned, there was Chris Hatchey there at the meeting. Chris did speak to perhaps the long-term, more preferred access might be to use the existing Switchback Trail that does lead into the area, and Carlin confirmed that there is actually a side trail then, that while the Switchback Trail takes you up on top, that there is a side trail that would bring you back down to the preferred location for, obviously, for rock climbing. So that may be a future endeavor as to, the best way to access the actual area. It's a road allowance as it currently exists at the end of 8th Street, so limited area, restricting access isn't legal as it currently stands. So public does have a means to access it through the current trail, but it could be approved upon in the future. We also had a, committee agreed to renew the lease at the Bethune House. Currently, the art gallery utilizes one of the apartments. They're going to be using the second apartment as of July 1, and effective then January 1, 2017, they will then have apartments 3 and 4 of the four-apartment building. So that was carried by committee. We had an extension granted for the Owen Sound Junior Lacrosse Club for use of the Bay Shore Community Center, expiring August 31, and they did make a note in their submission that they'd be interested in committee reviewing rates in the fall. Tom Williams Park, we had a public meeting a month ago on various concerns expressed by user groups. Following the public meeting, staff responded with some immediate upgrades and maintenance improvements to the ball field. And there is a $57,200 reserve for use, and committee unanimously supported allocating $14,700 of that, of the Tom Williams Fund, for Tom Williams Park, for clay mix for the infield, bleachers, repairs to the score clock, and a mound slope gauge, which is just a gauge to measure the proper slope of the pitcher mound. We also then had a report for the Kelso Beach Proposed Reconciliation Garden, the location of which, for those maybe unfamiliar with the south, southern terminus of the park, but when you go over the wooden bridge into the park, it's essentially directly north of that wooden bridge is the proposed location. So it was spoke to earlier tonight of the Canada 150, Owen Sound 160. You've already had it within your committee for a discussion. The, the hope is also to include an interpretive plaque outlining the history of the location as an AWASH settlement at the time of Owen Sound being settled by European settlers. Committee has asked for a report to come back, just further providing more history on, on the history of Kelso and the existing AWASH settlement. So we look forward to getting that information come before us at a later date. Also had a report regarding the Bay Shore. We had a couple of large, larger budgetary items, one of which came in slightly over budget, and that's the replacement of the compressor room electrical panel, as well a replacement of blinds is recommended to be deferred to allow for the retrofitting of hall light fixtures from what are now T12 fixtures to T8. And the reasoning for that is, there is felt to be perhaps one year of opportunity left to secure some funding to help offset that retrofit, and there's substantial energy savings can be achieved, not only in the retrofitting of the hall light fixtures from T12 to T8s, but there's significant cost savings for electrical use with the compressor room electrical panel as well. So these two larger items are felt by staff to take precedence. They have a higher need, and they have found some smaller items that they were able to offset or defer, and keeping the budget in place as it stood coming out of budget. So no increase due to the changes at the Bay Shore. And I believe that was the end of the meeting. We then went into a public meeting regarding the Harrison Park Swimming Pool. So for acceptance of the minutes, I'm not sure. Maybe I'll defer to the committee chair to ask, or with that, I'll ask for council approval of those minutes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lemon had his hand up five minutes ago.
Yeah, I had a question about some information earlier in your report about the Tom Williams Fund. I believe that's divided into two parts. There's $22,000... There's twenty-two thousand, which is for the harbor, the inner harbor, and thirty-five thousand for Tom Williams Park, and that was based on allocation that was set up years ago.
And Counsel Kepke?
Thank you, Your Worship. I would ask that the word "east" be added to the motion after Eighth Street, between Eighth Street and road allowance, the word "east" on the motion of item six B one, which is the rock climbing issue. It just says Eighth Street.
It's west.
Sorry, west. I do that all the time.
West?
It should be Eighth Street West, road allowance.
One other question.
I'm going to go to Counsel McManaman first.
Just further to Counsel Lemon's comments about Tom Williams Fund, I would add that we are requesting approval of the executors of the fund for that, those expenditures as well.
I believe it's been done. I'm just asking.
Sorry, through Your Worship, I was waiting for the approval of the minutes tonight before I, I would ask them formally.
Oh, okay. Counselor Lemon?
Yeah, when I was a little younger, and we used to get into that quarry, we used to come off of Ninth Street, not Eighth Street.
Eighth. The easiest way is eighth.
Well, we always climbed the other way and then down.
That's, that's.
We were exploring rocks.
Dolomite.
Nothing else, of course.
So Scott has, Counsel Gregg has moved the approval of the minutes with that, with that change to add west to Eighth Street and whatever the section was, and so all in favor? That is carried? Good. Takes us through our Minutes of Boards and Committees. We have nothing. Eleven D, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Boddy. I wonder if I could make a subsequent motion at this time regarding the Rice House?
I guess, yes.
I would just like to, there's some information in the initial report that I was a little disappointed that was missing. The Rice House, also called the Bethune House, was purchased by the city in the amount of approximately a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I think the reported stated thirty-eight thousand had been utilized for purchasing the building from the gallery, but the city had actually made a considerable contribution in terms of that overall purchase. In many recent years, it's benefited the hospital by providing temporary residence for locums, emergency department cover, and residence while the hospital assumes approximately five thousand dollars a year in operating costs, those being hydro, gas, water, et cetera, and they do their own cleaning and so forth on the building. Now, I agree with our city manager, who earlier stated they acknowledge that they will find alternate accommodations if the need is there, and they realize that, yes, this is a city property, and we have the right to do with it as we so choose. But that being said, they would be more than happy to stay in that building if the opportunity allowed. And I make this motion tonight, not that I haven't spoke with the Director of the Art Gallery. I did go over and have a meeting with the Director, because I think, looking forward, we have come to a consensus here that we are going to renovate this building. It's a politically sensitive initiative, but it needs it, and we're going forward with that. And my question to her was, when staff is relocated out of City Hall, is it feasible that staff can be reallocated out of the art gallery rather than the Rice House? Can they be, operate with current city staff when we find alternative accommodations for staff here? And her reply was that, well, it's not the most preferable option, or it wouldn't be the most preferable. It did still seem achievable to her in the, you know, in the name of saving costs and what I see as working more collectively altogether, because the initial report said there was no financial implication, but there is a financial implication. There's operating costs in the building as it currently stands, and the hospital assumes those. When the art gallery takes it over, they're assuming it, and they're still, we're making a contribution, the art gallery, on the city's behalf here, and I think we have a duty to the taxpayer to look after their dollars as, as best we can, and I think that's also a benefit to the hospital if we can extend that lease for one more year. So my motion is to extend the lease till January first, two thousand and eighteen, because there is a financial cost to the action contrary to the original staff report, and this maximizes usage of city facilities while supporting the number-one economic driver in our community, and that is the hospital. So that's my motion. I think it's beneficial to all of us. I have spoken with the Director of the Art Gallery, and it's something that she could be and would be receptive to, because there, it's achievable. It's not maybe the most preferred, but it's achievable.
Counselor Kepke?
Just a question. When you're relating this to City Hall renovations, are you saying that you're looking at the art gallery for city staff to go into? What are you saying?
No, no. We know that ultimately, the architect is recommending that this is going to be a full-on renovation of the building, and staff will have to be relocated.
Right.
So whether it's a public school, or whether it's across the road, or a second story somewhere downtown, my question was, can the staff of the art gallery who are currently being relocated to the Rice House, can they work, can we work with the city, with the city manager, and have those staff, you know, located with the current City Hall staff to where, where they go? And I'd note that the Tom minutes tonight showed that it's an artist in residence, so I've had, it said that it's staff that are going into the building to work, but we've also seen tonight that it's an artist in residence, so. But that was my question, was Tom staff who are being moved out of the art gallery, and they're looking for alternative accommodations for them, so they're looking at the Rice House. I said, can you, or would you be receptive to those staff being located alongside City Hall staff?
Okay, so Tom staff being relocated to the Rice House because they're, have no room at the art gallery, or they're renovating the art gallery?
They are running out of space, as I understand it, at the art gallery for storage.
I think the Accommodation Committee has already heard that we're not at the stage yet, and they have had lots of offers of places for City Hall staff to be relocated that I don't know if in their plans they can accommodate art gallery staff as well. So I think that it's maybe a little premature. I know it's not as far as the house goes, but as far as promising those staff somewhere to go then.
I think if, if it's an artist in residence, or if it's one or two apartments being used for staff, I think one or two staff could still be included with City Hall staff. That, that would be no different than the city having a temporary employee hired in two thousand and seventeen or two thousand and eighteen, one or two of, and that does sometimes happen.
Okay, I'm going to keep moving. Going to go to Counsel Lemon first.
Okay, well, I guess I'm the only one on council who was involved with the acquisition of the Rice House and the naming of it, of the Bethune House, because it was for the hospital. There were donations given, and a lot of people did a lot, and donated a whole bunch of work on the renovations of that building. That was not paid for by the Tom. That was money that was raised by people connected to the city to get the Bethune House up and running, so we could get the doctor recruitment that we were trying to get. And I really find this whole thing mystifying.
You've got information totally different than I've ever heard before. Go ahead, Counsel Larry.
Check for record.
I, I just wonder, what, what are we going to do if we, if we did this, and then we, we get a building for our staff to move into, and we don't have enough room for their staff? I mean, and, and it's too late then, the Rice House is gone.
I think it's, I mean, even looking ahead as far as a year and a half, that was in the conversation, and let's see, my terminology was, while it's not preferable, it did still seem achievable, even looking that far down. You know, if it was June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, which could coincide with the closing of a public school, and I was just putting that out there. Is it possible? Is it feasible? And the answer was, not preferable, but it could be done. So it, it was discussionary, and it's just looking at possibilities, but when it comes down to one or two staff, and we're looking for locating city staff, I think for the, for what this building does for the hospital and for our community, the hospital being something that benefits everyone, I think this is something that is achievable, and it's worth pursuing.
Okay, I'm going to go Counsel McManaman, and then Counsel Thomas.
Thank you, Worship. Could it be done? Yes, it could be done. I would point out a couple of points. We just approved minutes that goes in complete opposition to what, I'm not actually sure we can have a motion that goes in, contradicts a motion we just passed, which was to extend the lease to the end of two thousand and sixteen. You know, so that's a technical question, but set that aside for a second. This issue was discussed at two different Community Services meetings. It's fair to say the counselor disagrees with the decision of the Committee, but that is the decision of the Committee, and ultimately was just approved by council. So there's differing opinions, that's fine. I'm just saying this was discussed at great length at Community Services. Counselor Dodd's not here. I'm quite certain if he was, he would speak strongly in favor of the motion we just passed that extends it to the end of two thousand and sixteen, and then is turned over to the Tom. They talk about their, their insurance, having their storage for their artwork in the basement, trouble with, the insurance company doesn't look favorably on that, let's put it that way, and looking for other alternatives, moving their storage of their artwork to the first floor of the art gallery, and that would mean that some of their staff would have to move over to the Rice House. Either way, I think the issue's been discussed at length, was just decided by council moments ago, and I think we should move forward.
Everyone shaking their heads around. Thanks, Counselor. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, did the hospital approach someone and ask that they still maintain the lease for another year, or was it something that you thought?
Going to Mr. Ritchie.
If I could, Your Worship, I've spoken with certainly my two contacts at the hospital, Martin Maza, who apparently looks after their, their buildings, as well as the C O who expressed from the administrative side, they're, they're understanding the arrangement, and they are prepared to live by it, and that's the only two people I've talked to who want to be clear. They appreciate council's effort, the city's efforts, and they are making other arrangements. That's all I've ever talked to.
I, I'm aware from being involved in the last council, being on the Art Gallery Board, that a meeting occurred between Ms. Ikorn, Ms. Corsi, and somebody from the hospital, that this was arranged a good two to three years ago, and we've had no indication from the hospital that that wasn't what they wanted, I think. Counselor Gregg, you've contacted people, correct?
I, I was contacted. I personally was contacted, and in part of following up in my research, then I, I contacted staff at the hospital, as, as the same as I contacted the curator.
Shouldn't staff at the hospital be contacting staff at City Hall if they, and writing a letter and doing it appropriately?
Well, I had some missing details and information in the initial report that I was looking to fill some holes.
Ms. Stobel, can you help me out with the issue that Counsel McManaman has raised?
Your Worship, Section eight point five of the city's procedure by law deals with a motion to rescind the resolution, which is, in effect, what Counselor Gregg may be asking council to do, and if that's the case, since that previous resolution has already been adopted, he would have to give notice at a, at a previous meeting in accordance with provisions of Section six point one, and deliver copies to members of council within three days thereafter. So he would have to give notice after this meeting of his intention to seek a rescission.
So at this point, it's improper for me to recognize his motion until it's been done properly.
I believe that's a fair interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
But, Your Worship, he could give notice of motion tonight, that he's going to move that, right?
Yeah, yeah. And that would come appropriately at fifteen? Yeah, okay. So right now, then we've completed eleven C, which is Minutes of Boards and Committees for Approval. Eleven D, there's no Minutes of Closed Meeting for Approval. Number twelve on our agenda is Other Business, and we're starting with Counsel Lemon. He had two events to report.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. First of all, was the Trot for Transplants, which was held at Kelso Beach on the weekend, and the whole reason for the event is to make people more aware of the dramatic shortage of transplant organs, kidneys, lungs, hearts, et cetera. And there was a group out walking through Kelso to raise public awareness of this, and I think it's very appropriate. They had, I think, five or seven people there who were all transplant recipients. There's a very, it can be a larger and larger number of people within our community and across the country with, who benefit from organ donation cards that are properly filled out, which was part of the reason for that. The other event, which was a little different note, and that was the opening for the season of the Community Waterfront Center, and there was a good crowd on hand for that. There was also a dedication and a wreath placed on the memorial for Haiboo or Ebu, depending on your pronunciation of it, because this year marks the eightieth anniversary of the sinking of that ship just outside of Own Sound, and there were six local residents lost their lives, including Captain McKay, who commanded the ship when she went down. It was later removed from the site and put back into service, and there was a good crowd there, and everyone is enjoying themselves, and the new show that is on is The Art of the Sailor, and featuring scrimshaw, tattooing, and knot tying. And they even have some really, really old tattooing equipment, which looks like some medieval torture instruments, actually, but anyway, it's going to be an interesting and good summer, and there were a lot of visitors to the dining car and to the caboose that day as well. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Counsel Kepke?
Thank you, Your Worship. It was my pleasure to attend the Best Friend Dog Walk on behalf of the mayor on Saturday at Harrison Park, and it was for heart and stroke. They had lots of activities for the walkers, as well as they had a, a little circuit set up for the dogs, and it was a very well-attended event, and their goal was seventy-five hundred dollars, and I believe they're very close to reaching that goal.
Good, thank you. Counsel Larry?
Thank you, Your Worship. Back on May nineteenth, I attended the Police Chief Citation Awards. There were a total of four people that received Chief Citation Awards during the annual Police Week events. The first three were all related to the arson spree last August. Todd Boddy awoke his neighbors and helped get them out to safety. He helped seven people, including his wife and son, over a fence and away from the fire. The flames were only fifty feet away. Nick Moss and Kyle Stewart are two Gray County paramedics who received their awards for their efforts in rescuing people from inside a burning duplex. The pair also received provincial awards for paramedic bravery as well. Tyler Frank received his Citation Award for saving an elderly man outside Seasons Retirement Community in below-freezing temperatures. Tyler carried the man inside the front doors, covered him with his own jacket, and laid beside him until paramedics arrived. Also during Police Week, Chief Bill Sorenberger stepped aside for a day to make way for Thor Treslin, who was sworn in as chief for a day. Thor, who is a ten-year-old Bayview Public School student, wrote the winning essay during the annual Own Sound Police Services Chief for a Day contest, and from all the annual Owen Sound Police Services Chief for a Day contest, and from all reports, Thor did an outstanding job in his new role. And I'd also like to send best wishes to Deputy Mayor Wright, who is at home getting over her knee surgery. She's not here in person, but she is watching, she's already texted me to let me know I'm sitting in her seat.
But did she tell you to get out of it?
No.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Ritchie?
Worship, if you're done on other items, I'd forgotten one item, I would like Ms. Coulter perhaps to let the public know we had a berth at the park this week.
Go ahead.
We did, this morning, we have three new Signet Swans, and hope to have a picture through Mr. Alan Parker out to the public shortly.
Oh, that's pretty cool, down at Harrison Park, or?
Yes.
Great. Counselor Gregg, ATVs?
Yes, today marked the first day of the bylaw allowing ATVs on most of the city streets, but the concerns, and I had a couple of them come forward to me today, were actually had to do with the county rail corridor, and it's actually, has to do with the area that's not even in the bylaw if the county allows it, which I had multiple complaints about ATV usage north of 20th Street to the soccer complex. And I just like it mentioned that the ATVs are not allowed on any of the East Side rail corridor within the city right now, that's still being taken upon by the county. So any usage on those rail, on the East Side rail trail is prohibited, and even if it's past that area, including the Tom Thompson Trail, is for non-motorized vehicles, passive usage only. So perhaps we could even just double-check the gate situation at 20th Street to see how it's, if it's open, if it's closed. It could just be one bad egg, but unfortunately, I had a couple complaints today, and it was specific to those areas. Never noticed a thing on the streets, but complaints out in that area. So just a reminder to the public that at this time, that's off limits for the ATVs, the East Side rail trail.
Thank you. Just before I begin, I noticed that we got a package of information from the Billy Bishop Airport Group. I want to make sure that it will go to staff for the service review, and they'll have a look at it, so it will be included as information that is being received on it. Okay. Couple of fun things that I've been to in the last two weeks. First, Tuesday, 17th of May, I attended the Siddeham School Family Fun Night, it's a fundraiser for breakfast club at that school. Lori Ann Hines and volunteers put it together, and there was hundreds of people there. Our fire department was there, transportation was the theme, and it seems to me that I bought some cookies that I still have to go and pick up, and I probably should have had them here tonight, but I still have to do that. Friday, the 20th, is probably one of the most historic days in the city of Owen Sound with His Excellency, the Right Honourable David Johnson, Governor General of Canada, coming. The community foundation presented him speaking and answering questions there about, he's written a book, and it was on education and growth of the country and progression of the country, and it was very interesting. 2:30 or 2 o'clock, we attended for the presentation of new colors, which are like the regimental flag, but colors of the Gray and Simcoe Foresters, presented by the Governor General. This is 150th and 150th anniversary of the regiment, it is the ninth stand of colors to be presented. The last colors were presented in 1978. The material on these colors are expected to last to 2066, so it's a very special occasion, it'll be a long time before we see this, this event again. Brigadier General Guy Chaptalain, who is the chaplain general for the entire Canadian military, was there, very nice man. Brigadier General Gary Thompson, of course, Lieutenant Colonel Shane MacArthur, the commanding officer, for another 11 days or 12 days, the Gray-Simcoe Foresters organized the whole event, and it was pretty amazing to be there. Bit of history, Gray-Simcoe Foresters is primarily reserve infantry regiment of the Canadian Forces, part of the Land Forces Central Areas 31 Canadian Brigade Group, due to restructuring of the worst, worst, my English isn't good, and Sherwood Foresters into a new regiment. This is the only remaining unit in the Commonwealth of Nations known to be designated as a regiment of foresters. While there's many others, the only foresters, they exist as Gray-Simcoe Foresters, their motto is tenacious and versatile, and in fact, the foresters have been one of the most diverse roles in the Canadian Army, First World War, Second World War, South Africa, they've been split up, put into infantry units, armored units, and artillery. They're formed from the 1936 amalgamation of the 31st Gray Regiment and the 35th Simcoe Foresters, both originally gazetted in September 14th, 1866. Bethune was a member, Thompson was a member, Sam Steele, who was a founder of the North World, I guess the, was a member of the Northwest Mounted that went out for the Red River Rebellion, and then was the founder, or the first commander of the Strathcona Horse, which was a private group put together to go to, to South Africa. That's mostly the history of repeating myself. On Wednesday, the 25th, I also had the honor of attending the 167 Air Marshal Bishop Victoria Cross Royal Canadian Air Cadets for their 74th Annual Ceremonial Review. Amazing bunch of kids, it's amazing how disciplined they are, how hard they work, and how good they were, and they'll be future, future students, future leaders in the community, future military. And I just note, 74th Annual Ceremonial Review means that next year in 170, sorry, 2017 will be their 75th anniversary, so they're looking to do something as well. And of course, they're named after Air Marshal Bishop, who it'll be 100th anniversary of him receiving his Victoria Cross. Very, very impressive group of kids, and I was glad to be there. Yeah, pretty well covers major points. So with that, unless there's anyone else with anything to add, seek a motion, the committee rise and report.
I'll move the committee rise and report.
All in favor, that is carried. So now we're back in the formal session. Resolution adopting proceedings, committee of the whole?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor O'Leary, that the action taken in committee of the whole, and considering public meetings, deputations, public question period, matters arising from correspondence, reports, matters tabled, motions for which notice was previously given, and other business be confirmed by this council.
And all in favor, that is carried. And now we're down to notices of motion. Counselor Gregg?
I would make a notice of motion. Every morning I wake up, I wake up to learn something new that day, and this is a day to learn something new, and this is the time to do it. So is it regarding, under the community services minutes, item 6B dot 1, if that clarifies it sufficiently? I'm not sure if that's effective enough to narrow the scope down.
If I can just help?
Sure, I would gladly take the assistance.
What you'll be doing is giving a written notice of motion that you're having that particular motion rescinded at the next regular meeting of council.
And I'd provide that written notice right now? Yeah, I would.
Would it be easier to go to the next meeting and then become prepared with your notice of motion and have it heard at the following meeting?
No.
Because you're gonna scramble and try and write something now that may be scrambled.
Yeah, I could.
Is that easier?
Yeah, if that's within the procedural context, that's, works for me. Yep, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Number 16, new business by resolution, and I see, have no resolutions, bylaws? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, your worship, there are seven bylaws on tonight's agenda. One bylaw to confirm business of tonight's meeting, one bylaw to authorize the borrowing upon amortizing debentures in the amount of $10 million towards the cost of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and five bylaws to execute agreements already authorized by council for the 2016 downtown maintenance agreement with the Owen Sound downtown improvement area, the Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement for the Source Protection Municipal Implementation Fund, an agreement for environmental assessment for the construction of a trunk sanitary sewer for the Sidney Heights Secondary Plan area, an agreement for the 12th Street East reconstruction, Third Avenue East to Fourth Avenue East project, and a site plan agreement with 1886928 Ontario Limited Respecting Property located at 1960 20th Street East.
Thank you. Motion?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor O'Leary, that bylaw numbers 2016, 070, 071, 072, 073, 074, 075, and 076 be passed and enacted.
And all in favor, that is carried. So that completes our business for tonight, I'm looking at the clock, it's about 9:04 PM, so we can adjourn our meetings. Thanks, everyone.